In Israel, they're testing a drone air ambulance.
You know how it works, right?
Really? So it can hold up to two people, two patients, and fly itself wherever it needs to go.
Wow, that's pretty cool.
We'll call our meeting to order. First item is invocation by Pastor Frank Thomas Thompson of the First Southern Baptist Church. And then the pledge will be given after that by Natasha.
Heavenly Father, holy is your name, and we come to you this evening with Thanksgiving. I thank you for the mayor, every council member, every person that's here that represents the town. We thank you especially because your word tells us that you place people in authority. You place people to make decisions that benefit us. So I pray for wisdom for each one tonight so that they will make decisions that benefit all of us as a town. I also want to lift up to you the policemen, the fire department, the EMTs, and all those other first responders that are here to serve us, and we thank you for their work every day to keep us safe. And so we ask your blessing now upon this evening, every part of it. Thank you for all that you're doing in our town, and we'll give you praise for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you pastors. Now Natasha?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Natasha. She did say she was kind of shy about microphone, but she did very well. Okay, we go on to roll call Diane.
Mayor Skug.
Present.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Grossman.
Here.
Councilmember Mallory is absent this evening. Councilmember Marshall.
Here.
Councilmember Nye.
Here.
And Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
We have a quorum there.
Thank you Diane. Next item is the announcements, Chamber of Commerce. Zach?
Let me just adjust it after Natasha. Good evening mayor, good evening council. Once again, I'd like to say thank you for letting us come and do this. We really love getting the opportunity to come up here and introduce our members. So start it up with owners of Father Board LLC, Jared and Natasha Klein. Go ahead guys.
Thank you. I started Father Board in 2012 in Phoenix. We just moved to Prescott Valley this year, or in 2015. Father Board is an advanced electronics company. We do basically anything and everything to do with electronics. Our primary focus is commercial networking and IT infrastructure support. Secondary focuses are security systems, commercial security systems. Other capabilities are residential networks and security systems and mobile device repair, refurbishing PCs, virus, malware, malware, adware removal, basically anything to do with electronics. Yeah, that's me.
You better give your name and address and phone number, whatever.
Oh, my name is Jared. This is my wife Natasha. We're located off of Antelope Lane. It's a home-based business. My phone number is 480-271-5152, and we're on Facebook, Father Board LLC, and have a website, fatherboardllc.com. Yeah?
Good. Thank you so much, and it's so good to see you.
Thanks.
Jared, Natasha.
All right, and next I'd like to introduce Joe and Holly Brantley, owners of Empire Drain.
Thank you Mr. Mayor and Council for having us here tonight. As Zach said, my name is Joe Brantley, my wife Holly. We are the owners of Empire Drain. We are a professional drain cleaning service company. We can handle anything up from inch and a quarter up to 10-inch. We also offer a jetting service, a video inspection service, and I'm also certified with the state of Arizona for septic system inspection. And we are very proud to bring our services to Prescott Valley and the Quad areas, and we very much thank you for having us.
Yes, and I would like to tell you how to get ahold of us. We are at empire.com. I can talk loud, okay. You have a clog, introduce us, we'd like to take it out.
And, okay, just phone numbers to get ahold of you?
Yes, it's 928-775-3030.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations and welcome. Anything else Zach?
Not a whole bunch right now. Stay tuned for the events coming up. You can always look at our calendar of events section on pvchamber.org. If you're not computer savvy, you can call us at, like Larry, at 928-772-8857. Thanks again, we really appreciate you guys letting us do this. Have a great evening.
Good job Zach. Okay, next we have a proclamation, School of Choice Week. Read it Diane.
Yes, we do mayor. School of Choice Week, January the 24th through the 30th of 2016. Whereas all children in Prescott Valley should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas Prescott Valley recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Prescott Valley to be successful adults. And whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Prescott Valley, and whereas Prescott Valley is home to a multitude of high-quality traditional public schools, public magnet schools, public charter schools, and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children. And whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas Prescott Valley has many high-quality teaching professions in traditional public schools, public magnet schools, and public charter schools, as well as the non-public schools who are committed to educating our children. And whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options. Now therefore, I Harvey C. Skug, Mayor of the town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby declare January the 25th through the 30th, 2016, as School Choice Week in Prescott Valley, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens.
Thank you Diane. Comments Vice Mayor?
Well, I just want to say how proud we are of all of our schools in Prescott Valley. You do a great job, and you're a great representative of the school system. Thank you very much.
Well, I want to thank the council and the mayor for recognizing, School Choice Week is, sometimes it's a misnomer, that we're just talking about charter schools. And when you look at this community, there needs to be a recognition, in this community there is a recognition of all the different schools that are available for our students. Very proud to be the superintendent for the Humboldt Unified School District, which is the largest school district in Yavapai County. I'm very proud that 85% of the students and parents in Arizona choose their traditional public schools to have their children educated. We take pride in the fact that we are the largest employer in this area, and we take our responsibility for educating our future workforce and contributing to this town and the economy of this town very seriously as we educate our students. So thank you very much.
And I think you all know this gentleman, he's Superintendent Dan Streeter. Just a super gentleman, running a great school. Very proud of our public school, very, very proud of our charter schools. So keep up the good work Superintendent. Thank you so much. Counsel got any comments or communications?
Actually, we do. I do anyway. Dan, before you disappear, remember I told you, you're coming up for this. I was going to make the announcement about, there's an announcement about full-day kindergarten. I was at the governing board meeting the other night, and Dan and the rest of the governing board announced that starting in the 2016-2017 school year, kindergarten will be full-time, all-day, rather than half-day. And up until now, they've been, if they have, half-day was free, and full-day they had to pay tuition and meals. So, starting 2016-2017, it's going to be all-day free, full-day free. Do I get that right? Okay, that's good. That's a great announcement for anybody with young kids. And I also have a second announcement for everybody to mark their calendar. In May, May 13th, 14th, and 15th, there's going to be the Home Show. Habitat for Humanity is going to be building a home in the parking lot. There will be participation by the public. If there are any people out there, businesses, corporations, banks, whatever, that wants to form a team and come out, we're going to have eight two-hour blocks, four two-hour blocks each day, for as long as the time permits. So if you want to get and sponsor a two-hour period, I know the Prescott Valley Police Department will be coming out for two hours to help put it together. After the Home Show, that house will be moved to a empty lot in Prescott Valley, and there will be, the family that will be getting that house should be around that for that period. So please, mark your calendar as more information becomes available, I will be announcing it, it'll be in the paper, on the radio, TV, wherever we can get the word out. So that's May 13th, 14th, and 15th. Thank you.
Thank you Marty. Larry?
Yeah, I had a question for Marty. Are they going to paint it black and white? Kidding. What I would like to announce is that this Saturday, the 16th of January, we're having a budget open house from 11:00 to 1:00, or 11:00 to, yeah, 11:00 to 1:00, here at the Civic Center, to go ahead and receive input on the building and the creation of the new budget. That's number one. In addition to that, there's free hot dogs and chili that will be served for anybody that's interested in coming. In addition, we have art in the Civic Center as well. And the third thing is, we will be doing some recruiting for Volunteer Central. So anybody out there that has time, that they would like to get involved with the town, get involved with the police reserves, or any of our various departments that we have, with any time that you would like to dedicate to your community, coming out on Saturday to learn what opportunities are available would be really great. So we invite you, and if nothing else, free hot dogs and chili.
Thank you.
Yes, I do.
Rick?
Just to follow on to that, if anybody has information or needs information from any of the departments about the budget for next year, this is the time to do it. You can come out and talk to them individually, in person, and ask any of the questions that you feel you'd like to have answered, and Saturday will be the opportunity to do that. They should be able to, line item by line item, you can ask them any of the questions that you have. So this is your chance, please take advantage of it, bring the kids along with you. There's no reason that you can't come and get the information you'd like. So please come.
Thank you Rick. Any other comments? If not, we'll go on to number eight. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Town Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, unless discussion is desired on a specific item, it will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. This includes the December 10th work-study and December 17th council meeting minutes. And B is awarding a change order for the installation of hot melt crack seal and materials to CBJ Asphalt and Concrete Contractors LLC in the amount of $27,900, and approving purchase of crack seal from Craft Co. Incorporated in the amount of $22,079.06. C would be approving contract number WSG 1501011517YC with the Governor's Office of Youth, Faith, and Family, accepting a grant award in the amount of $206,465, and approving 25% $68,821 in matching funds. Another grant, D, approving agreement number 2015-265 with the Department of Public Safety to accept a Victims of Crime Act grant award of $15,197, and approving a 20% match. And E is approving agreement number 2015-266 with the Department of Public Safety to accept Victims of Crime Act award of $1,200, and approving a 20% match of $300. Anyone want to pull an item, or do you want to approve it as a whole?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve all items listed on the consent agenda by electronic vote.
Okay, thank you. Second, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion, second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote Diane?
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Me, you said? Okay, good, thank you, that passes. Okay, we move on then to number nine, Old Business Fraction, consideration of approving the second reading and passage of ordinance number 810, adopting proposed property management or property maintenance amendments. And with that, I would ask the town clerk to read ordinance number 810 by title only for the second reading. Diane?
Ordinance number 810, an ordinance of the mayor and common council of the town of Prescott Valley, a municipal corporation of Arizona, adopting by reference that certain document, Property Maintenance Amendments, declared by Resolution Number 1934 to be a public record. Revising Article 9-04, Property Maintenance, in Chapter 9, Health and Sanitation of the Town Code, by amending Section 9-04-010 definitions, repealing and reenacting Sections 9-04-020, owner lessy or occupant to maintain property, and 9-04-030, prohibition against placing rubbish or other property, enacting a new section 9-04-035, criminal and civil liability, and renaming and otherwise amending Sections 9-04-040, notice to comply, 9-04-070, abatement by town, and 9-04-080, assessment for abatement, to among other things specify that owners, lessys, or occupants of real property shall remove rubbish, including other accumulations of filth, related debris, and dilapidated buildings that constitute a hazard to public health and safety from a pertinent, adjacent, or contiguous sidewalks, alleys, and portions of streets which are not hard-surfaced for vehicular traffic, maintain said areas in a clean and safe condition, and otherwise avoid keeping or maintaining any nuisance thereon, including keeping the portion of any sidewalk immediately adjacent to the property clean and free of snow and ice, conforming with amendments to Arizona revised statutes limiting the ability of municipalities to require payment of assessments for town abatement of violations of the article from owners of residential property or four or fewer units serving as a rental with a tenant at the time of a removal. Setting forth in full the penalty clauses, providing that all other chapters, articles, and sections of the Town Code not herein amended, shall remain in full force and effect, and providing that this ordinance shall be effective 30 days after its passage and approval according to law.
Thank you Diane. You did very well, that's one sentence, and you stopped it without a breath. Okay, with that, I ask shall the ordinance pass? You want to set the vote Diane?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that passes, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to number 10, New Business, Public Hearing, Community Development Block Grant, declare the hearing open. Where's Ryan? There he is.
Mayor, Council. This is an item we've talked about a couple of times already. We originally met on November 19th, 2015, to solicit input from the public on potential projects. At that public hearing, there were three projects that were presented. One was for improvements to the Boys and Girls Club, including a potential expansion of their facility. A second project was the construction of Bob Edwards Park there on Long Look Drive, potentially including a street and sidewalk improvements adjacent to there as well. Those were projects that were presented for the regional account funding, that is funding that is received by the town every four years, based on a rotational cycle that we work with, with NACOG and the State Department of Housing on. Additionally, it was a combined public hearing for a state special project, which is also CDBG funding, that is a competitive statewide project, they allocate some funds towards each year. We've been successful the past three or four years of getting those funds, that's what was used to construct the sidewalks on Loose Drive over by the park, as well as most recently on Windsong Drive, we just completed that project with the SSP funds as well. With that, the project has to be, the money has to be used for one of three purposes, to benefit low to moderate income people, to eliminate slumware blight, or eliminate an urgent health hazard need. So with that, I'm happy to answer, any questions you might have?
Questions, anyone? None? Okay, if there's no questions, well, this is a four-part...
It is a public hearing, so if there's any members of the public...
I'm sorry, public hearing, so we won't, yeah. Okay, any other questions? If there is no further questions, then I would, nobody from the audience could comment? If nobody does, I would declare the public hearing closed, and we'll move on then to number B, 10B, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1946, approving the application for CDBG SSP project funding. There's...
If I can address the next four items, I'll just do it real quickly. I want you to know I had this as one action item, but I think Ivan got ahold of it, split it into four different actions.
Ivan's fault?
I think it is, or maybe Stephen did it.
Can we transfer the blame to Steve?
Here we go. Item B is Resolution 1946, that approves the SSP funding. That would be the application for improvements to Lake Valley Drive, here just south of us. Item C, Resolution 1945, that would be the application for improvements to the Boys and Girls Club, or secondarily, if that fell through for whatever reason, improvements to Bob Edwards Park and Long Look Drive. Item D, Resolution 1947, that is an anti-displacement resolution. We don't anticipate displacing anybody with any of these projects, so it's really moot, but it's something that we're required to do as part of the grant process. And item E, Resolution Number 1948, that's authorizing matching funds of up to $435,420. Those funds would come from the Development Impact Fee Fund for Streets. The Lake Valley Project was one that was specifically listed in our study, so it's an eligible use of those funds. By providing some matching money, we do increase the amount of points that we get for our application, we increase our competitiveness. So, that's my quick summary for those four items.
Good. Any questions, anyone, or motions? Let's take these four parts one at a time. Part A?
B.
Well, yeah, the, part B, I'm sorry. Anyone care to make a motion on that?
Mine's not showing anything.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion, authorize the mayor in his absence, the vice mayor to sign Resolution 1946 to approve the application for CDBG RA project funding, or a motion not to adopt, but obviously here we want to adopt that.
Okay, second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, with a motion and a second, set the vote Diane?
Councilman Grossman?
Yes.
Councilmember Nye?
It worked.
And that passes. Okay, B, I don't know if there's any more discussion or just a motion? C, I'm sorry, the C is a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1945 to approve the application for CDBG RA project funding by electronic vote.
Second, anyone?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion and a second, would you set the vote Diane? Motion, anyone, or set the vote? Didn't it work there?
Councilmember Grossman, are you logged on yet?
Now I am.
Thank you.
I found the box.
All right, thank you.
And that passes. We'll move on to number D, approving the agreement number 2015-265 with Department of Public Safety to accept victims of, I'm sorry, I ran a line. A consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1945 to authorize application for CDBG RA project funding. Any more discussion or motion on that?
Mayor, we should be on item D, which is for Resolution Number 1947.
Forty-seven, yes.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1947, the Anti-Displacement and Relocation Assistance Plan required by CDBG by electronic vote.
We get the motion in a second, would you set the vote Diane? We'll move on to E, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign Resolution Number 1948 to authorize matching funds up to $435,420 for the Lake Valley Drainage Road Improvement Project. Any discussion on that or motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Motion authorize the mayor in his absence, the vice mayor, to sign Resolution Number 1948 to approve matching funds of up to $435,420 for the Lake Valley Drainage Road Improvement Project by electronic vote.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Give me a motion in a second, would you set the vote Diane? And that passes. We'll move on to F, consideration... We'll move on to F, consideration of awarding a construction contract to the lowest responsible bidder, Alliance Street Works LLC, in the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five seventy-three, and to approve the amendment to the professional service agreement with Lyons Engineering in the amount of forty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars for the Viewpoint Drive floodplain channelization phase. Ray? Or Ron, I should say.
Mayor, council, good evening. This project was presented to you by Norm Davis Thursday, so I'll just give a brief overview of the project. If you recall, in September, Lyons Engineering was brought on board to do stormwater management project design for a project between Spouse Drive and Manly Drive. And this is a three-phased project, with Phase One being located in the Manly-Viewpoint intersection. The project's fairly small. It's going to be about four hundred feet of channel design and construction, going to be installing some sixty-inch color pipes, a little bit of utility relocation, and then paving Manly Drive back to the configuration it's in now. The project's funded by Yelva Pike County Flood Control District. The timeline's going to be about a month and a half to complete. We had a successful bid opening a couple of weeks ago, and Lyons Street Works was the low bidder, so staff is recommending award of the construction contract to them. Second order of business is for public works project, this typical protocol for us to retain the design engineer through the construction portion of the project, so we're asking that you agree to the amendment to their professional services agreement as well for that additional service. And with that, any questions?
Questions, anyone? Yeah, you're right, we had to study this last week. Comments, motion, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the award of a construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder, Alliance Street Works LLC, in an amount up to three hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-three cents, and approve the amendment to the professional service agreement with Lyons Engineering in the amount of forty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote, Diane? And that passed, thank you. We move on to G, again, Ron, I don't know if it's you or Mark, I guess, consideration of approving an amendment to CH two M Hill slash OMI agreement for out-of-scope services for the installation and integration of new supervisory control and data acquisition systems for, or supporting the municipal water system in the amount of forty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty oh nine. Neil?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have in front of you is an out-of-services agreement with OMI, which you've done a number of those over the last couple of years. And so this is for upgrading our SCADA, which is our control systems on our water side, essentially letting us control and monitor all of our facilities from one location. And this is, as I said, this is for our water system. You did one of these last year for the wastewater side as well, was actually much more than this one is, but, so we're upgrading and updating the Wonderware software and licensing agreement, and that is, that's in the amount of forty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and nine cents, along with the labor to do the work as well. Unfortunately, with this type of an application for this computer system and the controls, it's not plug-and-play like with your computers at home. So when you update the computer software, you've got to go back in and you've got to reprogram all of the control points back into the system. And so we have twenty wells out there that we're monitoring, so they've got to go back in, and each well has a dozen or so different things that we monitor at each location. And so that's what you're seeing reflected in the cost of this item. So I think with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, anyone? Mike?
No, I just want to make a comment. I think we've talked about this for the last year or so, as far as upgrades to the system, and it's very important, I think, obviously, to us, and I think we've had input from the state from time to time, and this is one of the reasons why we're going through this process. But I think it's well needed and necessary, and I look forward to this next upgrade.
And the last time we did this was on the water side was probably about seven years ago, and you know how computers, you know, you can't wait too long, or you don't keep up with them, so.
Good. Are there comments or questions? Motions, promotions, demotions, emotions, anyone?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve the amendment for the out-of-scope services with CH two M Hill OMI in the amount not to exceed forty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and nine cents to complete the installation and integration of new Wonderware and related equipment by electronic vote.
Okay, with a motion and a second, would you set the vote? Neil, put her in and save us some money. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Okay, we go on to H, consideration of approving an agreement with the artist for an art piece, CP, CIP Number P three six five point one, to complete the Civic Center Complex entry sculptor in the amount of not to exceed ninety thousand. Brian?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How are we tonight? Good. Tonight, we have a professional services agreement before you for a sculpture project. The gentleman is Stephen Kishel from Bluffton, South Carolina. We had a very extensive search through this process. But before we get into that, just to give, continuing a little dialogue and background from our work-study meeting, this component is a, or this item is a component of our public works project with the improvements of the intersection here at Lake Shore and Civic Circle. Originally, the project was to be part of a roundabout design for that project. I know some years ago, actually, it actually goes back to my date of hire, when that vision was shared with me for that Lake Shore Circle, and that vision was from preceding council vision that was shared. And it's the town mayor expressed last week, it has been an element or an insistence by councils of years past and currently that public art be a part of public works projects. So this vision does go back, and the impetus of what we're here today stems from that vision. This particular project, there is no roundabout. We're reconstructing that corner and that intersection in this sculpture work, and cultural enhancement or enrichment of our community is a portion of that. So this charge was given then to staff, and it incorporated our Arts and Culture Commission to go through that review process and provide the recommendation that they have for you this evening, and that is to create those different programs and diversities and enrichments and cultural activities that are provided to a community, especially when it's growing, and give back to the citizenry so that they're able to grow and better themselves through that process. So we went through a process that reached out nationwide. We had a total of twenty-eight applicants through this process, quite diverse, reaching from ocean to ocean, and they have recommended, along with a number of different folks from the arts community, whether they be collegiate educators, artists themselves, but a very diverse background there, and have provided to you their recommendation related to this project. We're looking at a professional service agreement that met those thresholds, that did not exceed the ninety thousand dollars of allocation that was provided to it, and it is determined that we will have completion before the end of fiscal year. So with your approvals tonight, we will be able to initiate that contract, authorizing that artist to begin the process, procuring materials, structural engineering, and then also proposals for finalization as it relates to the colorization and elements that will be put into that. And it'll be going through full staff review, analysis, and its design. So that, I would be happy to answer. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? This is completely separate from the road project, isn't it?
It is a component of the road project, and it has had that funding. Again, that being a budgetary discussion the council has had and approved in the current fiscal year, so those budgeted monies, and it has been a budgetary discussion item that has been had for well over a year.
Questions, anyone, comments?
I just want to kind of reiterate what I said last week, and like I said, it's absolutely nothing against you, but we raised taxes maybe a little over a month ago, and we told the people that we needed police officers and we needed to fix the roads. So I don't think that spending ninety thousand dollars on a statue is something that's smart for us to do. I think we're kind of kicking the taxpayers in the face by doing that. With the ninety thousand dollars, I've looked up a few things that we could buy for the hundred thousand dollars. We could fund one police officer from the day they get hired for over a full year. We could fix some roads. We could buy a Maserati, if we wanted to buy a Maserati. Ten years ago, when my house was built, it didn't even cost a hundred thousand dollars. And it's a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house. It's a pretty big house. So for us to sit here and say, we need your money so we can pay for more police officers and more roads, and then a month later, say we're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars on a statue, it just seems ingenuine to me. So I just want everybody to think about, think about it that way. When I, when I spend people's money here on the town council, I have to think about it as if it's my money, because it is my money. Everybody's money comes into one pile, and that's how we spend it. So when we're spending a hundred thousand dollars on a statue, would any of you do that on your own? Like, for your front yard, would you spend a hundred thousand dollars for a statue? I don't think anybody would, so that's all I really have.
Laura?
I want to share some thoughts with you. I belong to the NACOG Economic Development Committee, and we are constantly hearing from various businesses coming to locate their criteria. And it's always surprising to a lot of people that one of the criterias that we have to provide, and keep in mind, we're constantly trying to bring better-paying jobs into our area, and a big component each time to these businesses who come before us is quality of life for their families. They're very interested. It's so interesting that this came in my mail this week. It's a brochure for a business, a national business, of the title is Caring for Communities, and they're very interested in creating resilient, sustainable communities. And there were a list of items that are required to accomplish that goal. The very first item that they point out is arts and culture. The next one was community development, healthy educational system, attention to environmental systems, and provide human services. It was very striking to me that the very first thing on their criteria was arts and culture. Another thing that I've been aware of for a very long time is something that Winston Churchill said in World War II. When he was asked to cut the arts funding in favor of the war effort, he simply replied, "Then what are we fighting for?" If we were going to be using any of the funding that the tax increase is scheduled for, I would say absolutely no. Absolutely not. Those are dedicated funds to hire the officers, they're dedicated funds to fix the road. This is a project as indicated by Brian that's been in the works a very long time. And I think it's interesting that nowhere along the line did anybody come before us when we would discuss that here, that was concerned about that. I, I want to say I was a child of the Depression, and I can remember a friend of my mom's gave her a trunk of clothes, they were adult clothes, and we were farmers, and we were hurting and we were struggling, and my mom made my brothers and I clothes out of that. But my mother was a very wise woman, because she also took some of those fabrics and made toys for us. She made me a Cornhusk doll with a darling little dress out of a sleeve of one of those garments. And that was my first lesson in understanding the importance of arts in the lives of an individual and in, in a community. The other thing I want everybody to understand, the arts and culture budget by us, by me, what has been completely slashed for years and years and years. We had one staff that was dedicated to that, that position was slashed. We have not taken care of arts and culture in this community for at least five years with any funding. This project came up, as our town manager explained to us last week, this component was always a part of this project. There was never any surprise or secrets about this. So I'm confused and saddened that we don't understand that a resilient, sustainable community requires more than water and streets. It requires trees, and it requires plants. Those are arts. Those are pieces of art. And I'm excited to see some arts and culture commissioners out here, and I hope you will give them some time so that they can present their information and how they feel.
Vice Mayor? Artie? Not right now. Mike?
I'd be happy to make a few comments. If, if my mic is working, it is. But as we had talked about last week, when this came up, that it is part of, I think, a vision the town has had for many years, and it's incorporated as part of a road improvement that we've talked about, as you, we've mentioned earlier, even from the standpoint of a roundabout. And, you know, I think we can always look at our budget and point at what we, we could do with funds that we've allocated one place and now we're putting to another. And I thought the same thing, you know, maybe we could, with ninety thousand dollars, hire an officer or do a few yards in terms of road improvement, but we've allocated that through the half-penny tax that we approved. And, you know, I think this is something, in terms of my perspective, that we're not willing to continue to deal with the status quo. We've done that for, for many years, I think since the Great Recession. And we're now ready to embark on other things that we've developed as far as a plan of action in our 2025 plan, as well as our annual budgets. And this is just another step to achieve those things, and so I fully support that and look forward to the, the project coming to a conclusion in the near future.
Any other comments?
Mayor, I got another comment.
Okay.
I'm completely for the arts and culture. I, I know we need it, and we have quite a bit of it here. I'm not saying that we should just magically go get rid of it. I like it. Everybody likes it. But what we have right now is an issue where we do not have enough police officers, we do not have enough roads, and that's where the money should get put at until we have met those needs. Once we've met those needs, then we can talk about putting a statue up. Until then, we can live with what we have. This town is amazing. Everybody loves this town. People... People come visit for a day, and then they want to move here. That's what happened to me. So let's just hold off on the $90,000 statue until we're in a better situation as a town. That's all I've got to say.
Any...I see some people from the audience. Yes, sir. Come on up. Introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name's Chuck Horton. I was here a few months ago, and I'm a little bit surprised that I'm back here again to talk about this. A few months ago, I was here talking about the tax increase that you folks put on everybody. According to your position, it was desperately needed. This town needed a tax increase. We're in dire straits, and although you have millions of dollars in your surplus funds, you had to have more. And so now you pass this tax increase, and on the front page of Wednesday's paper is $90,000 going for a statue. This is really disingenuous of this council to do this. When you have millions of dollars in surplus, you ask and pass an additional tax increase on the people, and you base that tax increase on needing support for the police department, and you need support for roads. You turn right around, and you plan to spend $90,000 on a statue. Police department needs help. You should be helping them and put this statue off to a later time. The roads in this town need help. I brought that up, and when it's an open forum again, I'll be in front of you to talk about that. But my position is, this is a disingenuous expenditure, and you folks should be ashamed of yourself for passing a tax increase to help the police and roads, and you turn around and you want to spend $100,000 on a statue.
Thank you, Chuck. Anyone else? I'll have...yeah, Nancy?
Nancy Smith, member of the Arts and Culture Commission. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I just, from my own point of view, like to say that I think this argument is in the wrong place. The motion here is to approve the artist. The $90,000 is part of the Lake Shore Project, which was approved long before the tax increase ever came about. This is in the budget. This could have been argued long ago. It isn't the $90,000 we're here to approve or disapprove. It's the acceptance of this particular artist. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else?
I do have a comment about that. It may not be about the $90,000, and it may have been approved a long time ago, but none of us here, or at least I didn't, know that we were in such financial straits that we couldn't afford to give the police department what they need and what the roads department needs. So the situation's changed, and we need to adapt to the situation.
Sir?
Excuse me, I have a voice problem, so it may be difficult to understand. I saw the article in the paper...
Introduce yourself also.
Pardon?
If you would introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Burke Hess, H-E-S-S. Recently moved to Prescott Valley. When I saw the article, I was quite disturbed. It reminded me of one of the reasons that I moved from California, because this is exactly what they do. They want something, they spend the money even though they don't have it. I saw that the article stated that the amount of $90,000 had been budgeted. Budgets can be changed. That amount of money could be diverted elsewhere. I'm just as much interested, I think, in art as anyone. I'm probably more interested than a lot. But it just doesn't make sense to me in this economy, where people are sitting here talking about the troubles that we have, paying our wages to our employees of the town, can't repair our streets, many other things that are happening in this town too, that there aren't monies made available to you. Now, it just doesn't make sense to me that we have to spend that money at this time. And as I said, it reminded me of why I moved from California. This is the way they do things there. We want something, we buy it, somebody else pays for it. Or the money's diverted, and we have to find a place to get the money for what is really needed. I don't think there's much more than I need to say, other than one thing that kind of troubled me was the town manager had made comments that were neither for or against it, but it leaned toward implying that we had postponed all this for the last 25 years, that the members of the council had...many members of the council had wanted this for years. Many mayors had wanted this for years. That has nothing to do with anything at this point. We have a situation here in Washington that we have problems with. We have to resolve those problems, and the way to do it is not to spend money we don't have. Thank you.
Thank you, Burke. Craig, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Craig Arps. I think that the discussion about this kind of goes back again to kind of some other things I've talked about on other issues, is that this is a fundamental misunderstanding of government. I mean, taxes are not optional. People are forced to pay their taxes. And you can't take tax money and use it, because that's not a slush fund to be used for whatever we feel like we want to do today. That's been taken because it's been recognized that that's necessary for the public. Art is not a necessary thing for the public. It's nice if you enjoy art. You're all welcome to go buy some art, right? But that's not a necessary thing for everyone in the public, and everyone in the public is forced to pay their taxes. When you understand, like one of the founding fathers said, that government is force, you're forcing someone...if people don't pay their taxes, they go to jail, right? We all know that. You're forcing someone under threat of jail to pay for art. That's basically what's going on here. So, I mean, do you really think that that's appropriate? We're not, you know, debating whether or not we all like art, or whether or not we would like to see more art. We're debating whether or not we should force everyone who's paid their taxes in this town to contribute to art. That's a completely different question. If people would like some more art, they're welcome to pool their resources and go buy this same statue and put it in, right? Why can't they pool their own money and pay for it if it's what they want? But not everybody wants this. But everybody has to pay for it. That's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Anyone else?
Good evening, Council.
Pull that down just a little bit.
Yeah, he's a little taller than I am. Good evening. I find this tremendously...
Introduce yourself for the record.
What?
Introduce yourself for the record.
Oh, sorry. My name's Matthew Woods. I find this tremendously disrespectful. Several months ago, or one month? You raised the taxes when people asked that you put it to the ballot. You did it anyway. Now we're looking at $90,000 for a statue. I'd like to echo what Craig just said, and just, that's about it. It's very reminiscent of Marie Antoinette when she said, "Let them eat cake." So, thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Anyone else? Any more comments from the council or...
Yeah, I think I kind of agree with one of the members of the commission that we're looking at one item in our budget that consists of many, and it'll be a long year if we have the same rhetoric regarding what we could do with these funds. And, you know, I think you're putting words in our mouth as far as desperate, dire, disingenuous, financial straits, misunderstanding. I think we've done everything in terms of provide information relative to our budgeting, our 2025 plan. And this is something that we don't have a choice relative to how we allocate funds other than when we did enact the half-cent sales tax that was allocated to public safety and road improvements. And that's something that we could do over time for many years, as we've explained in terms of funding and allocation. We have the funds to do that, but not at the level that we anticipate we can with the half-cent tax increase. And so I think as time goes on, you know, if we need to address every item in the budget relative to its appropriateness and whether or not you want it or don't want it, we need to hear from you, and we appreciate you being here this evening. And we've gone through this discussion for several months now, and, you know, I think we'll be happy to explain why we're creating this improvement on the corner here, which does incorporate part of a road improvement. It's a signage type of a project as well that I think will help people find where the town hall is and to conduct business there also. So it's not something we've done in a vacuum. It's something that's been planned, and it has been years. Believe me, it's not something that we do overnight. And so I look forward to more comments in the future. And again, if you can come Saturday and talk to each one of our directors of our departments and let them know what you feel about how we're allocating funds and how we're using those funds, and then they'll have that input as well. So we appreciate the input and look forward to seeing you on Saturday.
More comments, Steve?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
A motion not to approve the contract with Mr. Kichel by electronic vote.
Okay, if there's a motion, is there a second? I'm sorry, it's limited to the council. If there is no second, then we have to let the motion die? Any other motions? Anyone?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve the contract with Stephen Kichel for construction of the sculpture, CIP number P365.1. That is part of the Lake Shore Drive widening project in amount not to exceed $90,000 by electronic vote.
Second, anyone?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I'll have to admit, I have mixed feelings about the urgency of this. Dan, would you set the vote? Okay, that's four in favor, two opposed. Motion passes. Okay, with that, we go on to consideration and discussion of general unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Any such remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks should be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Anyone care to make any public or unscheduled comments? Yes, sir. Chuck?
Chuck Horton is my name again. I'm astonished that just council ignored the comments and decided to pass something that should not be passed. Came here today to follow up on my previous comments a couple, three months ago about the conditions of the roads here. Back a few months ago, there was some resealing or covering of the roads here on Lake Shore and on Navajo and on Superstition, and it was done prior to the meeting that I attended. And so subsequent to that, your meeting came, and I made some comments about the road conditions prior to the resealing, putting down the new road. Navajo in particular was very lumpy and bumpy. There was like a washboard in several areas of that. There were some thumps going on every time you ran across a manhole cover or a water valve cover or whatever else is in the middle of the road. And then the resealing came on. Now you've got a new road, a new road that's lumpy and bumpy and washboardy, and the thump-thump for every manhole and valve cover that's in the middle of the road still exists. I mentioned back a few months ago that I think that this town needs to get somebody who knows how to build roads, because apparently the road department here doesn't know how to put down a smooth road. I mentioned that subsequent to the new road, that there was crumbling going on, the breakdown of the edges of the new road was happening, and Mr. Norm Davis was in attendance, and he came to me after I spoke and said, "Give me a call. Let's talk." And so I did. And subsequent to that conversation, he sent one of his staff to my house to talk about this issue with the crumbling of the roads and the bad condition. And so he said, "We'll be in touch." And I got a letter from the city, November 10, about the road conditions and the issue that I brought up, and they also included a questionnaire that I needed to return. I still have this questionnaire, because the work that was promised hasn't been done. And that was back in November. Another issue I brought up on Navajo was from Florentine up to the end of the center median. The cactus that's there in several spots, probably 15, 20, maybe even 30 spots, the cactus is over the edge of the road and into the road, some by a little bit, some by a foot, some by a foot and a half. Mr. Davis and I talked about that when I called him and when he sent his representative to me, and they sent me this letter dated November 10, same time, and with another card, and I still have it. Why do I still have these cards? Because the work still isn't done. Now, I know kind of how the city contracts with different companies to take care of issues like this, landscaping. I don't know who the company is. I don't care who the company is. All I care about is they're not doing the work, and this city still pays them. And we're talking back in October, and this cactus is getting larger and larger in the 15, 20, 30 spots along that road back and forth on Navajo. And it still hasn't been trimmed. Now, they were there a while back, whenever it was...
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. They were there, they trimmed the nice flowering bushes, but they left all the cactus. They left all the cactus. If this city wants to contract with a company to do landscaping, to do this kind of work, then they ought to be getting what they paid for. Someone should be looking at the contract rather than just blatantly paying these people and checking up on them, because these people are not doing the work that you folks or this city is paying for. Somebody needs to look at that...
Thank you.
...so I can turn this in.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, any other public comments? If not...I'm sorry. Oh, Brian, you got comments? Okay.
My apologies, Mayor and Council. I failed to mention something that I made a personal promise to, and that is former Commissioner Judith Berry. Judith was appointed by the commission a few years back. Unfortunately, with her health and the death of her husband, financial situations did not allow her to continue on the commission nor... not allow her to continue on the commission nor reside in our community any further. But she did express to me her thanks and appreciation for the opportunity also to serve the commission and to begin the process of this particular project. The words, in summary, basically, was of thanks. The thanks from the standpoint of, through the arts, for being able to create a dynamic and very progressive community, as it reflected through the arts. And one of the most interesting statements that she provided was substance to the soul of our community in doing such, because it becomes and creates a place of interest and a desire to be part of something greater than the individual. So my apologies again for interrupting your meeting, but again, I'd be remiss if I did not express her contributions to this process.
That was not an interruption, that was a very, very timely.
Thank you, sir.
Any, yeah. Rick, yes?
I just wanted to add to what the gentleman just told us about Navajo, and I'd like the town manager to follow up with Norm Davis about that, because that cactus truly does make it nearly impossible to drive down the center lane without scraping the side of your car as you go down. And he's absolutely right, and there is no reason that that should wait that long. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other comments? If not, we have one item that everybody hates. Oh, wait a minute, we're not ready to, we have to, we need a motion to convene into executive session in order to conduct the annual review and evaluation and performance with the town manager Larry Tarkowski. The executive session is scheduled pursuant to Arizona revised statutes 38-43103A1, which allows for discussion or consideration of employment, assignment, or appointment of public officer, employee, or of employee. Anyone care to make a motion on that?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Hey, we have a motion, second, anyone?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, would you set the vote, Dan? Okay, that passes. We're going to convene into executive session here as soon as Dan gets set up. Thank you all for coming.